Let's have a roll call. Mr. Burst.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Byrne. Yeah. Cheers here. Let's open this meeting. I'm gonna ask Mr. Burst if he would to please some prayer.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Father, we ask that you would bless us and we deliberate in the business of this city and this county, oh God. We pray, God, to you bless the citizens, inhabitants of Ware County. And Father, just pray, God, that you would continue to be with us, oh God, in everything we do. Give us the right decision to make concerning the citizens in Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise your leg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any guest speaker?
No one that I knew of signed up. No, sir.
No guest speakers. Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll get on with the agenda items. We got a memorandum of understanding with the Ware County Board of Education.
Yes, sir. This is a MOU with the Board of Education for us to be able to apply for the grant funds, the first responders supplemental grant for their SRO. And their SRO officer, excuse me. And this is the memorandum of understanding we have to have and provide to the school board to be able to do that. We're gonna apply on their behalf, basically.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Anybody got anything on it?
No, Scott, they still refer to them as the school resource officers since they got a police department there? Do they still?
As far as I know, they do. I believe, is that, I think Commissioner Lucas knows, but I think they do still.
They still consider school resource officers.
Okay.
It's just that a certain amount of the money comes from the state now. They own that TRS program and all that too, so.
Okay. But we have to get the grant through full commission?
Yeah, because the school board, I think the school body itself can't ask for it.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Now, they've already applied for this because I noticed said the deadline was December the 30th.
Yes, sir. We turned it in and so with, this would allow us to be able to apply on their behalf. They have to have this for us to be able to do it.
Okay.
It's kind of more of a formality.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think it's needed.
Okay. All right.
Put it on the agenda.
We'll put it on the agenda. Now, B. Resolution of 2022-02 adoption of language access plan, LAP, for the Georgia DCA.
Yes, sir. This is a document that we have to have approved in effect for us to be able to be able to use the community development block grant funds or federal funds. And that language plan is requirement by DCA, Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And this is basically a plan of how we would work with the community if someone is not, not able to speak English and how we convert files and, I mean, convert documents and things. So it's just, it's more of a plan on what could be provided when someone has questions and they're not able to speak English. And on the, I was gonna point out, the resolution shows 2018-02, but I'll make that correction. I just noticed that.
Okay.
And also I noticed in reading it too, Scott, that it's based on a certain percentage. If it's not up to a certain percentage, then you don't have to really
That's correct.
translate all the documents into it, but
Right, right.
still wanna try to accommodate, you know.
As much as you can, especially if someone's having, you know, if you're out and if, when they go to do the CDBG, if there's a resident out there that doesn't speak English or speak English very well, then we'd make provisions to be able to communicate with that person so they know what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, any more on it? Let me get over to agenda. Okay, C, alcohol license application.
Jimbo, can you, can you speak to this alcohol license? You might know a bit more on this than I do.
This is an old credit store, Albany Avenue.
Yeah.
On the corner of Albany and Gorman, I believe it is. Is that right? Basically, it's sold, the new, it has a current license or had a current license for years. And the new owner, Ms. Patel. And Mr. Patel are looking to get another license there in their name so they can continue to sell alcohol off premise consumption, off premises, big beer and wine.
So there was no issues with anything? I mean, they need all qualifications?
They need all qualifications.
Yeah, qualification looks right on it.
They have several other stores.
Not close to a church or?
They have several other stores that already got license.
I believe so.
So it doesn't add a new store, it just continues what's there now?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more on it? Anybody got anything else?
I'm good.
All right, get it on the agenda. Okay, the D is the Miracle League memorandum of understanding.
Did I just speak to this on what corrections?
Miracle League. Okay.
Yeah. I put this on the agenda for the commission. There was some revisions and some suggested conditions that the Miracle League wanted. And I supplied this to you all, what they wanted, with highlighted portions and the strike throughs. And I didn't know if there was any, any comments or anything to that nature, so we could go ahead and finalize it.
Right. I remember there was some changes asked last time we was, and they've been corrected, I guess.
Well, just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, so we did make the changes that you all wanted last time, and then you all voted to approve that version, and so that was done. And then since then, the Miracle League has come back and requested revisions of their own. And so certainly it's something I think the commission will want to review carefully, you know, and determine as to each one, if that's what you want or what you don't want. For example, number 11, they asked, or that Ware County would agree to include in future sploshed funding request, access to all sports fields, gyms, pools, et cetera, for the special needs community. So there are some, there's different language in here, you know, some of which is related to the field and some not, which may be in fact what you all want. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, we've read it carefully and understand what those changes are.
Yeah. Chairman. Yeah, my turn. And that's one question on 11 there. How does, how does that even tie in with what they're doing Miracle League with the splosh? And I see what they have requested basis like that we allocate certain funds from the splosh? Is that what they're trying to imply?
I think so. I think, you know, they're just, they're interested in seeing those funds. So I think they're just using this opportunity to try to get the commission to agree to that.
It's already the case. I mean, we do it now. It has to come to, it has to come to an end on this memorandum of understanding. It's gotta come to a final signing point or they go to Pierce County or somewhere.
Right.
So what we need, what we need to do now, this is just.
I think 11 is more of a general statement to say that, you know, anything that in recreational needs throughout the community and such, so.
So do we need to review this again? Or can you give us a clean copy, the real thing? Or it's hard to read enough. This is just about all yellow on the things they want.
Yeah.
It's time to draw this to an end.
So, yeah, so what, what's different from the version that we approved? What are some of the things other than that number 11?
So, so everything in yellow is language that they have added. And then everything that struck through is language of ours that they've removed. So, I mean, you will see that it is, is significant as far as the language changes. As far as the substantive terms, I think it's, I mean, to be fair to them, I think what they're trying to see is to be clear that that if there is any conflict in scheduling, that Miracle League will, you know, get the, the first right to use the field. That and if they chose to add sports later on, other sports, that they would have that opportunity to do so.
Let's see.
I really don't see any, see much difference in what this, these changes bring about compared to what we already approved.
About number three?
I'll stick with that.
Number three.
Where it says that Ware County will be responsible for the cost of repairing any damages to the field during the term.
So that the way that we had it drafted was that essentially it would be up to the commissioners as far as, you know, what, what decisions were to be made to the field as owners. And this does, number three, to your point, Commissioner Lucas, as it says, Ware County agrees to post signage around the field. So there's, there's certain additional steps that they're asking you all to take and be responsible for. And I don't, I guess we don't have a representative here, you know, if they were here, they could kinda walk us through one by one, I guess, to understand the rationale behind each one of those.
Y'all understand it? Nothing? We carried over, either tape it, what you wanna do?
I'm good with the agreement we approved last meeting, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Go ahead. Put it over to agenda now. Okay. Watch it. Put it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
We approved the last time. Is everything in here that's, that's not highlighted or?
We can give you a copy of, of the version that you all approved last time, but as I said, everything that's highlighted is what they've added. And then everything that is struck through that has that line through it is what they've removed from that previous version.
Okay, well, I don't have that original version that we, the one that we passed, you know, just to see because, you know, thing just like as far as the responsibility of keeping the field, I think we pretty much had agreed to that, hadn't we?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we agreed on that.
And they, they struck out the part two of the scheduling and such like that, that each year that would be handled year by year. So, you know, they may adjust their season and their schedules and that kinda thing. Just so it, they're not tied down to a certain schedule each and every year and it always be the same.
And some of us just, you know, like, just the language, just like in the, what was the every, well, we had every child deserves a chance to play baseball. They say every child and adult, so it's, that's not a big.
No, those changes are not. I agree. And that was language I pulled directly from their website, but and certainly that's not an issue if you all desire to make that change.
I agree to go ahead with what we done approved then. Is that what you?
So is it a big difference? That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
There's not that much.
Difference, ain't it?
Well, everything in yellow is what they've wanted to add.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Well, I'm saying what did we have? I mean, boy, that was just like a little language in it or just like by the every child versus every child and adult.
Yeah.
Well, from what I'm reading, there's a couple places in here where it looks like they're asking for more. Because they keep reverting back to that original 375,000 that they put up front. And they're wanting to use it and every money. And then they want to include our splosh later on down the line for funds to do repairs in the dugouts, to make sure the lights are up on their field, to make sure their field, and even upkeep on that field. If I'm reading this correctly, they want us to be responsible for the upkeep on a field that they're paying for.
That's correct.
I think we had agreed to that.
Yeah, we pretty much agreed to that. And I, you know, the thing is, is, you know, it's, it's, it's the county's property. And we had the staff out there and as long as the funds are there to repair it, that will be probably one of the deciding factors when you go to, if it needs, you know, something repaired and so forth. And that's why they were mentioned about the splosh too, that, you know, something needed to be repaired and use splosh funds and set aside funds to repair it if it ever needed to be repaired.
Now, this is for 15 years, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And they pretty much, we've, I think, yeah, already got someone that's gonna do the field. And so they pretty much just waiting for this to be done before they can
Correct.
move forward.
This, this already been awarded and the contractors got in touch with us about wanting to know when they could get started. So that's what we were trying to do is get it finalized so we can move forward.
Okay.
I don't really see, I mean, other than like the splosh thing, but you know, I, most of it just more or less language change in it.
You said that a lot of that funding could come from that. What was it at?
That 375,000?
No, the T splosh, yeah, that.
Yeah, we typically, in splosh, in splosh, we typically have money set aside for the recreation, the trim on the nerve field and, and the two parks that we take care of. But now those funds, we don't really have any of those funds left unless that gets renewed. If it doesn't get renewed, then that's gonna be a whole nother issue in and of itself. Because not only just this field, but you have that whole facility, that whole complex that you have to maintain, which really.
Would have to come out of splosh, huh?
Yes, sir.
And we also paying salaries and hourly wages and all that out there too for crews.
Correct.
We just carry it over and load on? In the meeting?
Was, I think just up to the commissioners as far as, and it may be, you know, during the break that we take this time to do that, is to determine, you know, what of these, because there may be some changes we do wanna incorporate, such as the, you know, every child and adult, certainly. That's something I think we could probably all easily agree to. Whereas there may be other changes that they've suggested, you know, such, you know, just, and I don't know what those might be, but it could be the splosh, it could be that Ware County would be responsible. Because I think in the older version, what we had was if the funds were available, you know, we would, basically Ware County would determine when and if to repair the field. And this envisions more of an automatic, I think, you know, Ware County will repair the field sort of thing. So it's, it's just candidly up to you all as far as what of those provisions you'd like for staff to incorporate, and we're glad to, glad to do that.
Okay.
And, I mean, if you desire, I mean, we could make a recommendation on that also, certainly.
We can do that in between now and the meeting. We need to discuss.
I think so, yes.
Got time to, if we wanna add something or take it. Okay, we'll carry it over to the meeting. All right. We're going to E, Georgia DOT Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, the LMEG application. That's on.
Yes, sir. This is a proposed list for street improvement, road and street improvements for us to apply for through DOT. We have to turn this in annually at the end of January. And the engineering staff has gone through and pulled these streets and the various things that would need to be done to improve them. And we're just asking for this list to be approved or amended, however you see fit, just so we can put it on the application and.
This is on that grant that we, we've already got it?
No, sir. This is, this is the LMEG. The other one is the CDBG, if that's the one you're thinking of.
We got, okay, this is not the C.
This is the one we do every year. And so this is a whole, a whole new list of street improvements that we're proposing to do or recommend, recommending to do, should say.
This is pretty much relegated to the county?
Yes, sir. Out in, in the unincorporated area. Yes, sir.
Okay.
If this list is approved with this amount, what is the matching funds for the county on 1.17 billion dollars?
It's, we have to match with 10%. Yeah, because we're in that regional T splosh.
Okay. We have to just match it with the 10% of what they do and DOT will apply.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a list generated by the public works manager and engineers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The, and let me mention that the, the box at the top, those are the streets that in, that are in the peripheral area of the CDBG. CDBG is a whole nother project and those are being done. And these streets up here in this top block are the ones around it that need to be improved. And so what we thought is there's a way of doing this and doing them all and getting them done all, all within that Emerson Park area. And tried to fix some problems that's been there for numbers of years.
So this approved 647,000 were to be put in with the CDBG money?
Be a, actually would be a separate project altogether because we cannot co-mingle LMEG funds and CDBG.
But all the money would be in that one area.
Sure. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Please me.
Any more on it? Okay. Okay, that one over. And then F is a proposed future road paving.
We, we put this list together to give it to the commission to see if there was any interest in making some improvements on any of these roads. We, engineering created a estimated cost for each one, and I'm just bringing it to the commission. We have two funds that we could use. We don't have a lot of money. We've got a little over 2 million left in the 14 splosh on roads and streets. And so far, we've got about 2.7 million in the regional T splosh that we've collected so far. So you're looking at probably, you know, roughly about a little over 4 million dollars that we have now that we could use to do some of these streets. Not use it all, but there's two pots of money that we could use if that's something the commission so desired.
We could, excuse me. In other words, we could get a lot of these or several of these streets.
Yes, sir.
In this time.
If I'm not mistaken, some of these streets, Gilbert's Park, Gibbs Lane, Prescott, Preswell, Tazwell. We did a, all the departments did a pretty intensive study on paving and drainage in that area. And then did a survey, excuse me, of the residents in that area and on those streets. And I think 65, 54% did not want any paving, don't come out here, leave us alone, right?
Yes, we mailed letters, gosh, probably about three years ago, I guess. And that was, as we just had them to fill out a little survey, and I think it was roughly about 60, 40, and 60 was, was not interested in having them paved. And I'm not sure, I know Walker Road is one, I'm not, I couldn't remember some of the others, but.
Pascal Road, I thought title to that road was kinda questionable. So that'd be paving, some claiming it's private, some public, 1.2 million dollars to pave questionable road.
Jerry, I'd like to say something on that. I, I found out, since I've been up here and trying to get roads paved, that about 60% of the people that live side of that road don't want it paved. But everybody drives up and down, it wants to pay.
Yeah, I agree.
They don't, nobody want that road, I said in the five of y'all that built, goes to Atlanta, but everybody get up and run a hundred mile an hour going down. But they don't want, the ones that live side of it don't want it paved. So we're gonna have to think about that a little bit. And I know what you're saying. That's, that's true, what you're saying. I've, I've run into that. They do not want it.
To me, it looked, it looks like the priority would be, instead of priority, but. but those roads, streets that are a big problem, big problem for the graders and all that. And those don't want to pave, then catch them up on the end at some point. But put a priority on the, the hard needs of the county. So I agree. I mean, it's like that every time.
We, we, we need to sometimes go ahead with it. If we, if it's a through road, I can see a dead end or cul-de-sac road. If they, if they settle down there, don't want it paved, I can see not paving it. But if that's a through road for other people to travel on, it needs to be paved.
One thing out there we're running to is there are tiny, tiny, tiny little roadways. And you got to, you get, you get a road that's going to end up two feet from somebody's front door. So.
Yeah.
As long as we keep all that in mind, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, right?
Right.
So, I mean, to me, it would be advantageous to us to take, as usual, a road or section at a time and get one project and do that, get that done.
Yeah.
I agree with that 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are several of them. There are several of these roads right here, streets, they need paving, especially some of the ones that, that are through roads, you know, where people go travel a lot.
One at a time is for me too.
Yeah.
Well, we already got Rowell Road in section four down here. We already got Rowell Road on the dock to be paved, right? I mean, that's, that's the one Littlefield was contract on.
Rowell.
Yeah, section four, it's just the fourth block of Elmer Thrift Road slash Pine, Banks Lane, Horseshoe Lane.
Oh, yeah.
And then it's got From and Two. Elmer Thrift to Rowell Smith Road to Dead End.
Yeah, that would be Banks Lane on that one, Commissioner.
Banks.
From Elmer Thrift Road to Rowell Road.
I know that community there. I've spoken with several people out there and they do want theirs paved.
Yeah, they all want it paved out there. That little slash pine road needs paved. Woo, that's a bad road. Okay.
The biggest thing is drainage. Mike and I were out there today and we've been there a hundred times. People call me and the drainage, that's a big dang problem. Nowhere to send the water.
On Rowell?
Any of them.
Yeah.
Most of them on this, on this list.
I wish I had the money to do all of them. They, they need it. About every one of them need it. Okay.
But I'm good with the list, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I am too.
Yes. Put it on again. All right, any?
I would request that the manager and the engineers come up with like a package and let's review it, see what the money is and do package at a time. Two or three streets at one time or however you want to do it. But have some kind of system to just move forward. Where's the money all that?
Okay.
We did some of these, I mean, they have been done, that we just pay what's there. You know, surface treatment and build some of the regular. God, I talked about that. I don't know if we, that we may have to look into that.
Yeah, I'm willing to look at any, any proposal.
Yeah.
Look at judgment at that time.
Okay. Any more commissions? Come in.
I got a couple. I've been brought my attention this week. The Heritage Center, they're wanting to do something right across the street from the Heritage Center on what they call Scout Lake. I've got called by the director and the chairman of the board in reference to that. And kind of want to know where the county stands, where we stand on that particular topic. I went out and listened to their, what they've got planned on what they want to do because that is, you know, their property. And they're raising funds to get things done out there and having volunteer days and that kind of stuff. But they're very interested in how much we would be involved.
Doesn't the city still own that?
As far as I know, they do.
The city owns it.
City.
That's, that's what she told me. She said the city owned it, but she was still like us being involved in it. I don't know. I know we can't be involved in it financially, but.
We went through that when, last year, the same.
Think so.
Same thing.
Maybe a little lower.
Because of cost and, but I want to bring it to the table.
That was gave to the city by the Sessom family, wasn't it?
And I think the cities just let it go and go and go because it's all grown up to a woodland now.
Did they indicate what the city's position was on it?
City's position is not anything.
Last time, city didn't want anything to do with it.
They didn't want nothing to have to do with it. And that's why it's all grown up now.
Yeah, I know that's, that's been a topic even when I was on the city commission.
Yeah.
The, the Scout Lake out there and they had like a rendering, you know, how they could do it, make nature trails and all that kind of stuff, you know?
They got a whole diagram laid out of what they want done now.
But I think what they want was the county to, like, deed it to the county and then the county, you know, but, uh, because it's pretty much like in the county, even though the city owns it.
If I'm not mistaken, they was damn on that thing. And at one time the city was going to repair it. We went out there and mowed it, cleaned it up. And then it was turned down for some reason by EPA or somebody, wasn't it? You have to remember that.
It's turned down, you know, Joe's company tried to.
Joe's company tried to.
Develop it, but wouldn't, they wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
Had to be a part.
Huh?
I think there's a deep restriction of what was given to the city. That's a musical part.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
We went out there and dug some chopping. And I think my understanding, we were told to get off of it. And it was originally used for chopping. Got to use the cutting house and trees or something.
Wasn't it donated by the Sessom family, Jerry?
It was, it was donated by our family.
Sessom, well, and all that back then.
But I think like Jimbo said, it had deep restrictions that, that's always got to be used as a part.
Yeah.
That's one of the, the thing, that's one of the trolley cars went out there. There's still trolley cars out there on Clumsy.
Right.
Anyway, I will, I will support doing anything with Scout Lake.
And for yours, what, you got anything else?
Yes, just a couple of things from some citizens.
Okay.
I got Miss Lanier at 2606 Gilmore, personal friend of mine, family friend. She would like some drainage issues addressed out on the far end of Gilmore, on the south end of Gilmore. Of course, she lives way out. She's called me twice about it. She's got COVID or she said she'd have been here today. So.
What's the address on Gilmore?
2606.
2606. Okay.
Uh, I stopped by and talked with some Asplund workers at 512 Community Drive. I don't know if Jimbo's seen it or not, but at 512 Community Drive, there's a, I don't know what kind of tree, oak tree or whatever it is up in the power lines, growing actually up into the power lines on our right away. And she's had most of the trees trimmed back in her yard off the lines that come to her house. But, you know, of course she can't get out here and trim the road and don't want to mess with those power lines. I know Asplund's been working in that area, going down. But it looks, it's pretty heavy right there in that area to me.
512 Community, you said?
512 Community. I went over and looked at it last week and it was, it's pretty thick up across all the power lines, not just the cable and internet to come to the house.
Any more? Got anything else?
I don't.
Y'all got anything? Manager, you got anything?
No, sir. I don't. We have a pub, just to mention, we have a public hearing at 4:30, just a reminder.
Okay. Now, your motion to adjourn this?
Some of.
Second.
Hey, we have a second. All in favor, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, meeting adjourned till four.
Yes, sir.